Okay, you're good.
All right, the time that I have is 6:49 PM on this Tuesday, August 2nd, 2016. And this is a, this is a city council work session meeting for our enterprise fund budget.
Yes, sir.
All right, and so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at this time.
The mayor council prepared a PowerPoint, discussed the enterprise fund budget. What we got suggested for, we've met one on one, we've talked about the individual elements that make up the enterprise fund, water and sewer primarily, sanitation is included in the sewer fund, but it's a money in, money out proposition. So, in talking about it, looking at it, if you have any specific questions about line items or projects, I'll have the projects up here and what we hope to get accomplished this, this next year. The main thing is just really talking to y'all about, if you agree with revenue expenditures, how do we get there? And that'd be the right conversation, and really, what do you, what do you like, what do you not like, and what's, what's going to be applicable for, for the whole. So, as soon as Jennifer's ready, we'll plug the PowerPoint back in and we'll kinda walk through the highlights of it. It does have some pie charts, it was kinda to make it simpler to understand, I know y'all need pie charts, 'cause you really, you do understand what we're doing and what we're trying to accomplish. The main thing was if we had anybody in attendance to try and see the breakout of how does, where does money come in, where does it go, and what were those percentages, and what were those pieces of pie. So, can you all get it?
Well, if that's not been working very well.
The hotspot? And I've got, I've got one too, if we need to crank it up. But, and I've got a laser pointer, you've asked for a laser pointer in the past, Billy, so I've got one, guess you want to point something specific. So, we're following back in. How old?
Really good. It's late at work.
Really soon as morning, you just use a laser pointer?
Well, I've got, I've got one really good, I hope, like, you see it. I have a good, right?
Those are the mayor pro tip perks.
You use it on the dock?
Yeah.
Is it on them?
No, cats, they don't understand it. I never, and what?
My German shepherd would chase that one.
Well, my dog doesn't chase it, they don't, they're cats.
So, by the way, I've had a track, why don't you walk? Take it on the wall, I'm ready to do it here, dude.
Yeah?
Still looking for it.
There you go. Okay. Hey, Ryan, you understand, next to Billy, you can hit that source button, or resync. Are you? Right, here's the resync. All right, hit source now. Should be the digital RGB, or not RGB, but, right there.
I was doing that all the time.
Okay. I'd say we turn it off and turn it right back on. There, just a second or so. Hit the power, oh, no, don't do that. Hit okay.
Probably standing on the table with you want Mr. Laser Pointer to press it.
See, one, right there.
There it is.
There it is.
Found it? Okay, cool. So, you have your screen or?
Where is that at? There we go.
That's, that's a gals, blue water and gals.
I think it's coconut, maybe.
Coconut, coconut? Okay, so, so start now, you've got your, you've got your handouts in front of you, and it's, it's a follow-on, you can look at PowerPoint, you can let your hand out. The main thing is, again, we were trying to, whoops, that's not mine. Was, and looking at, looking at the enterprise fund budget, water revenue, wastewater revenue, just kinda the breakout, again, we're hoping that, you know, some of the people that have questions and answers over the year would come and take this opportunity to sit and listen to what we're working on, what y'all are considering. And so, the majority of it is, is water sales on revenue, as far as where the revenue comes from, same thing on the, on the wastewater revenue. You know, it's got impact fees, tap fees in consideration, and the rest of it is miscellaneous fees. But, the main thing is just have a breakout for other people to look at and kinda understand the pie chart. As far as the whole cost of, of water and wastewater, salaries is gonna be the gray portion right here, and that's where the, the laser pointer does come in handy. So, salaries is gonna be this portion right here, debt expenses is lighter color, right here, in water, and then maintenance and operations is the large portion. Capital purchases is gonna be the kind of, I wouldn't say puke yellow, but I'm gonna say puke yellow, or okra, okra. And then, yeah, so, and of course, maintenance and operations on wastewater expenses, it's gonna be the same thing, and the salaries is gonna be pie, the gray pie, just like it is, so. Other than that, depreciation should be similar, because it is, take half an after, make up the 95,000, you see inside the, inside the budget. So, it's kinda not really trying to dumb it down, but the main thing is trying to get some of the people that come in, something tangible to look at and understand. And when I do that cost of governance, like I did last year, that goes into the whole budget message, it'll be in there as far as what people pay and what they, what they, money in, money out. So, on the enterprise, enterprise fund budget, the capital expenses improvements, the projects that we hope to get accomplished this year, is replacing the sledge valves out at the sewer plant, replacing the pumps and the digesters out at the sewer plant, put in a new composite sampler, a new sledge level monitor, a new flow meter of what, what's coming in, as well as an electric gate. We've also got the RAS pumps that were put in this last year, we're putting a building over to protect those pumps, as well as that muffin monster in front of them, so that way, like we're talking about a little bit earlier, you know, I kinda misinformed some of y'all about what muffin was, 'cause it was just muff in the nuts, and it's muffin monster is, is a name brand, and it chews up all the solids, the rags, and everything we're having issues with, the guys are having to constantly pull the RAS pumps apart to get all the debris out, to clean them back up, and so it's costing us manpower, and it's costing us seals and just equipment to try and keep those things maintained. So, yes, sir?
How many of those sledge valves, pumps, how much of that equipment burned up maybe, or was ruined prematurely because of the, the things that aren't supposed to go into the sewer? Or, or did we get our money's worth out of what's going to be replaced?
The pumps and valves are, that's, were the same valves and pumps that were installed when they put the plant in. They just, they reached their life expectancy, actually, beyond, beyond their life expectancy. Matter of fact, we can't even use the, the, we can't use the sledge valve, it, 'cause it won't even lift up and down, so we actually had to take, take a portable pump and transfer it, and then the same thing with the pumps and the digesters, where I haven't used gasoline fire pumps, just to transfer it out of the plant. But, they've reached their expectancy, and the sampler is something that we've never had before, we actually have to go out there and drop a tube in four, five times a day and check the level of the sludge, and then the sled, composite sampler is, where it samples water leaving the plant, that TCQ wants us to test for E. coli, or, E. coli mostly. Flow meter is required, required by law to know the flows that we have leaving the plant, we don't care about what comes in.
Okay, so it's not what's coming in, it's what's going out?
It's what's going out. Because you have evaporation, so, we just need, our, the same way with the, the pumps and everything, that's, that same electronic eye has been there for years and years, and every time we've calibrated it, it gets harder and harder to calibrate. Everything else is something new. Electronic gate, we have, we're in and out of the plant so much, we're having to stop and open the gate and close it.
With that muffin monster, that's probably, is it, is it fair to say that that might extend the life of, of the equipment?
Oh, yes, sir.
Downstream?
It's gonna extend the RAS pumps, because I probably spent four, five thousand dollars just on seals, breaking it down, 'cause when you break anything down two or three times, you might replace those seals. We actually lost a pump this year, wait, I don't know if they've sent us any money back yet, Jennifer, or not. And we also lost a motor, and I, they were supposed to bring a motor down, I haven't checked on it, Steve. But, we lost, we lost electron, the motor to a lightning strike, but the pumps, the pump we lost to, to the rags.
And it's probably gonna save a couple hundred hours of manpower, that, that it's taken two guys to break down the pumps to do that, they could be out doing regular maintenance. Yeah, everything except the last two bullets there is really at your plant, which, when it was built in '03, '04, is really, nobody's, until Steve got here, nobody even looked at it, I guess. So, it, you know, we're paying for a decade of neglect on it, and we're trying to get it back up to stuff, so we don't get any violations from TCQ.
The generator is required by TCQ on this wastewater plant, we have a generator out there, but it's the same one that was purchased with the plant. The fuel tanks actually got a hole in it, but the fuel tank and the trailer's all one piece, and it's not automatic, you actually have to go out there in the middle of the night and start it up, and then shut it back down. And of course, TCQ's are gonna require us to do something on our water, all of our water pumps and all of this, so I'm doing it, trying to do it gradually over a period of time, the same way with the robotic protection on the tanks.
I want me to drag this out with all these little questions, but the old generator set that we have, are we gonna be keeping that, just to have?
I'm gonna move it to well five.
Okay.
That way, if I lose power, I have no way, we lose power for a long period of time, there's only one well capable of supplying water for the city, for power protection. It won't supply all the water, but it, it will keep the elevated tank full.
So, do they go to five, or do they go to six, where we're gonna take it from the water line?
Well, five, put that one.
Get well six, yeah. We can have it at five as backup, but well, yeah, with well six coming on, it gives you, it'll give you that dual feed.
All right. Those are legitimate questions, and Steve hasn't been available, I mean, he's been out with shoulder surgery, Jennifer's been out with attorney leave, so I mean, the main thing is making sure that y'all are getting, y'all feel comfortable with, with the information y'all are getting.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, the main thing was, you know, when Steve submitted everything, it was under repair and maintenance at the sewer plant, but the majority of the stuff is not necessarily repair or maintenance, it's more of capital expenditure, 'cause we're replacing these things, so, that's where you saw it move, well, it was moved down to the capital expenditures line. So, it's, it's all coming out, out of the same bucket, but the main thing is being more appropriate on where, where it's allocated. Dallas Street Water Line Extension, Shreveport Sewer Extension, in your packet that I, that I handed out, it's in black and white, but we've also got here, we've got the, are the two projects, and so we set aside 100,000. The Dallas Water Line Extension is the 12-inch water line, about 180 feet, linear feet, and it's where we ended up, and when I talked to y'all about it, it was, the water line started on the north end of Georgetown and came up Dallas, and the, and the current point that we stopped was at Houston Street, so incrementally, we're trying to put this line in to get that, that inner loop, but this is extending it on down to, to Shreveport, and of course, we wanted ultimately to get to Marshville and then start going west, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then also on the sewer line project, be starting out reconstructing the manhole top on Kelly Lane, and then, did I clear it up yesterday, Billy? I think I told you it was on San Antonio? It's actually not, it's on that, it's on that drainage easement that we have in between the homes, north of San Antonio and south of where Kelly Lane, Kelly Lane ties back into Dallas. And so, it'll start at that manhole, reconstruct it, go back east, and then turn north, going back towards Shreveport. And so, the ultimate goal is, where we had the catastrophic failure on Shreveport during the flooding last year, and we had to do that rebuild, and where it's really, how deep is it again?
Thirty.
Thirty feet?
Twenty-three, yeah, twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three feet deep. So, we know we have an issue there, and with that older pipe, and so we wanna start at a logical starting place and make our way out, so, hopefully by, if we stay on this path, by the end of year three, we'll be at or underneath the train tracks moving, moving east, and that way we'll have a solid, that's our main trunk line from the old part of town, and that way we'll have something solid moving towards, towards the sewer plant. Of course, we did the, the pipe bursting under the Texas Water Development Board line to take everything from 75, as well as through Georgetown and Industrial Park, and of course, majority of y'all had, were able to go out and look at the pipe bursting, but this is taking care of the old part of town and trying to make sure that we've got a good trunk line going out. And those, those are two projects that we're back in the, how it go backwards.
My main question was, like I said before, was that, when we get done with it, will we fix the train back to where the yards will look nicer?
It'd be in the contract.
Okay, it'll be in the contract to do that.
Okay.
And the other thing, will this maybe, you put the map back up?
Sure.
There's a person, I, I'm not exactly sure which street, I wish I would have looked at it before.
Right here?
It's, no, it's down the road from him.
Okay.
A couple of blocks.
Yes, sir.
That, that, on Highway, on Highway 5, he's on the corner, and he's had a sewer problem for years and years.
That won't fix his problem.
That won't fix it, okay, you know which one I'm talking about?
Yes, it's actually underneath a house, it's one of those, we're sharing lots.
Yeah.
It's, you know where that ditch is?
Chickens near from the water, or?
No, you know where the ditch is, it feeds to, from Waco back to Mr. Morse? I forgot, it used to be, worked with the city years ago.
No, that's not the one I'm talking about.
But, the?
This is about twenty blocks down from him, fifty blocks south of him, but has a, a ranch looking style housing, drive-through driveway, tricked the driveway, or, you know.
Talking about the gravel, talking about the gravel circle.
That's a guy that many were dealing with.
He had a problem, I, I think their problem is they got two or three inch, two inch drains, you know, you know.
Have a three inch coming out.
Yeah, yeah, swipe, yeah.
I thought he had roots, and that he needed to get that, get that solved. What issue was it?
We, they, he keeps, kept telling us that it came to the front, but it never came to the front, we don't have the yards. It's, it goes across his neighbor's yard, and his neighbor wasn't gonna give him access to cross, repair it there, so, his option was, he was gonna go all the way out the back of his fence, around the swimming pool to Kelly.
Okay.
And he didn't wanna go around the swimming pool.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we gave him options how to repair it, it's just, he's not.
And honestly, y'all, the guys weren't supposed to be on his property cleaning out his line for him, but they went in and tried to bust it out.
Yeah.
But, if we'd have done any damage, it would've been our responsibility, we weren't supposed to be doing that. Responsibility's on him, I mean, 'cause he's supposed to be kinda connected with the street and the issues on this side, he's supposed to be taking care of it, we wanna be good partners and we're trying to help him solve the problem. But ultimately, I mean, we did give him some options, and I went out there and actually looked at it, 'cause they had just, they spent quite a bit of time up there trying to figure out, or help them figure out what the problem was.
We spent three days.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we had two, two guys up there for three days trying to bust it out, and finally just came out and said, hey, you know, we gotta stop, you know, 'cause, I mean, we're running the risk of damaging something on his private property that we would've been responsible for, and we should've did that. But, yes, sir, I know what you're talking about. So, yeah, these, these are our two projects, and, but yeah, the majority, the majority of it you're gonna find in the capital improvements on, on the sewer side, except for the Dallas Street Water Line Extension, and you'll see that 100,000 on the, on the, on the water side. Does anybody have any questions about any of those? Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay, so, just your 17 enterprise fund budget, variables of rate making. We've got expenses versus cost, it all comes down to the number of customers, their meter equivalents, depending on what type of, what type of customer they are, residential, commercial, industrial, manufacturing, what is, what are our revenue sources, charging for, for use, and consumption versus fees, and then, how many gallons do we typically sell in a year, so those are the things that make it up. And then, the way we, the way we've worked on it the last few years since we brought in Phil Gibbons from TCQ, sent him to us, was breaking up the rate between the base rate and the tiered volume rate. And so, in looking at that, those, those are the common factors that we, that we look at every year when we're, we're building the budget and bringing the rate to y'all. So, this year, as far as expenditures on the water side, we've got the 1.5 million dollars that we're expecting, that we're anticipating spending for labor, labor material expenses, equipment, and, and projects. And on the sewer side, it's the 1.4 million. The total comes out to three, three, just over 3 million, and of course, our funding sources, again, are water and sewer sales, fees from tack fees, impact fees, late fees, connection and reconnection, disconnection and reconnection fees, as well as any interest that we gain on, on our account. And then we also have our sanitation contract with Republic, and that's, again, that's a money in, money out equation.
How good are we doing in using this formula sheet that we have? It coming out to be fairly accurate at the end of the year. Are we going back and checking to see whether or not the predictions of how much we were gonna get from it were actually fairly accurate or not?
Lynn and I discussed it a couple weeks ago, and we're doing, we're doing fairly well. And we've been short, we're always short going into the summer, because on the, during the winter and during the spring, consumption is low, 'cause you have, I mean, you have dead yards, and then in spring, you're getting that, hopefully applicable rates to protect your green area. But, once you get into the summer, things start dying off, and you're trying to keep it nice and green and lush, is when, when we see consumption rise, and for us to see the volume of water coming in. And so, you know, before, I think before Timely, Timely walked in, and the new packet that I put in front of you is the updated revenue expenditure, which had the ones that I handed out yesterday, were, had a shortfall of 160,000, and so, looking at those and going, okay, we were just fine last month, the, the revenue hadn't been booked to that fund, and so, went in, talked to finance clerk, and made sure that we booked it appropriately, and it's just a manual update, so now we're, we're 20 green, it's good right now, and that's weighing labor and, and costs in, in our projects appropriately, but we're gonna find it right now. So, as far as, you know, we're constantly finding that balance between, is the revenue coming in?
So, the formula's good enough to where we don't have to go to that good guy and get him to read, fill the formula.
Well, the, yeah, the little spreadsheet that he gave us, the right maker, we can, we'll get into that in a minute here, of how variable it is, we're, we're using all the tools on it right now.
But, I mean, what we're using when we get done predicting it, two years ago, we predicted we were due extension, so, did we end up doing that?
Yeah, matter of fact, the last couple years, we've been ahead of the schedule.
We've been ahead.
Okay.
And, and, I mean, the only thing that skewed that was the audit, when the auditor was talking, we had gotten that money in last year, but she was talking about this year that we'd shown, she had shown a shortfall.
Yeah.
That wasn't necessarily, she'd actually talked to us about and primed y'all for that money that we had gotten in being extended, and yet, it wasn't articulated this year when she came to do the audit.
Okay.
So, it's, everything's been going, everything's on track.
Okay.
So, we're doing, we're doing well as far as taking care of, of.
I'm just, I just wonder if we can rely on that formula to give us, if we choose new rates to do it? To get us there?
Yeah, we'd do that. Yes, sir, as far as, as far as what we suggested, yes. Now, if we start playing around with, you know, putting a cap on it, we start doing winner averaging or something like that, then it's, you know.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna have to make sure, we'll have to go back and make sure that all formulas are working appropriately.
Right, right.
So, and it really comes down to, you know, what, how many, what are our water sales anticipated versus what we really need for revenue? So, that's, that's the big thing. But, yeah, the total on expenditures is, is that just over 3 million? The funding breakdown of revenue and fees, impact fees, we anticipate 264,000, tap fees 94, connection fees are 36, late penalties are 50, interest income is 2,200, and miscellaneous is 20,000. And of course, when we talk about miscellaneous, and we discussed this, this is the take-or-pay amount that we, we just made Hannah and Melissa pay us, and of course, this year, if you look at your revenue expenditures, it's around 33,000. We're taking water, we're gonna be taking water, we believe in line share of the pay, take-or-pay overages when we pay to Howe this next year, and then we'll only be getting a portion around 20,000. On water sales, we, we anticipate 1.2 million, on wastewater sales, we anticipate a million, and then a solid waste, that 200,000 will be coming in, and we'll be turning around and, and paying Republic. And of course, that's, that's all based upon, they ask us how many residential meters do we have every month, and then they bill appropriately, and so, it's the money we take in that goes back out, so it's always, 200 is always just a loose figure, it's not an exact figure, it's, it's all based upon how many residents we have. And so, that, that total for the funding breakdown on revenue is just over 3 million, so we're matching expenditures with, with revenues. As far as the budget's concerned, as far as looking at the, the rate sheet, how we put it all together, I'll have Lynn discuss those elements, because once we get into it, these, Lynn's a spreadsheet viewer as far as the rate sheet, because what ended up happening when we did, when we worked with Phil Gibbons, when he handed that thing off to us, there were elements that, that engineering felt like were missing, and one of those was impacting tack fees. Otherwise, we would be putting the full burden of rates and, and needed revenue directly on the customer, where impacting tack fees and the whole reason we brought an update to impacting tack fees to y'all, to get competitive, was to make sure that we're, we're finding the revenue and we're, we're using it appropriately. So, Lynn, I'm talking about, yeah, sure.
Billy, just, you had it perfectly in there, you're about two minutes too early. Just so, all those forecast revenues, and I try to identify where they show up, this is the water rate map, just, you know, you got all our expenses up here when we see it, and, I mean, but tack, the impact and tack fee show up here, all those other fees show up here, so what, what we're doing, here's that 1.596 in expenses, so what we've gotta do is match in our revenues right here. So, here's impact fees, here's the other fees, so with our sales, the residual is 1.262. So, whatever water we sell, we've gotta make 1.262 on that sales to come out even and make our budgets. There's a couple, and like the previous slide said, there's a couple variables here. This is our meter, this is our meter count equivalents, okay? And I'll get to that, the next slide will show that. And then, here's where we forecast what we think we're gonna sell each year, and this is 140 million gallons is what we're tracking to sell, we're gonna sell about 123, 124 this year, but we've got 64 new houses in Georgetown, Stone Hollow's gonna be having some houses next year, I think it was, huh? In Palladium, well, I don't know if Palladium will start pulling water by the, by next October, but, we're getting more users, and the way we get the water fee to start coming down is, is you got more people, you got more legs supporting the load, and we're at that, we're in that growth stage right now to where the rate has stabilized over the last couple of years, I mean, we don't have these eight, nine, and 10% increases anymore, we just, we're just got a little tweaking to do, and we're doing this, so, as we grow, the rate comes down. Perfect example, my, my partner Bob, everybody knows. So as we grow, the rate comes down. Perfect example, my, my partner Bob, everybody knows, uh, was at Dallas Water Utilities. In two thousand and two, he asked for a water rate increase and he went back to find out the last time they had one, it was nineteen fifty. And they were a dollar eight in nineteen fifty, they were a dollar ten in two thousand and two.
Wow.
Because they have three million people, you don't have to raise your rates.
Yeah.
To do that, you've got enough people using it, you've got new growth in that. So obviously, we're not anywhere near three million people, but, but that, just always know that we're closing in on that to where the burden isn't on every homeowner going forward, you know, as we go forwards with that. So these are kind of the numbers that I talk with Frank every year. Uh, go to the next slide Jennifer, because the equivalents will show up. Okay, here's the actual number of meters that we have. It's, uh, fourteen hundred, I forget what, the total number's about fourteen hundred and some odd. And here's the equivalence. And what we do by that is that, that's the volume, like this is a three-quarter inch meter is a one. It puts out about twenty gallons per minute. A one-inch meter will do two and a half times that. So it, it's based on the volume of water the city can supply on, under normal operating pressure to that. So here's all your multipliers here. So that, that comes out and then what that does is that we charge on the base rate, for example, is in this case, it's thirty-seven seventy-six. Well, two and a half times that, I can tell you this is ninety-four forty-one. Because a one-inch meter is gonna have two and a half times the volume availability, so they get two and a half times the charge on it because that's how. And then, so that's what we're doing. At a hundred and forty million gallons is what we said, you know, with this number here that we said we're gonna have to sell. At the base rate of three-twenty is the new rate. That's gonna provide that four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So, uh, we've got to make up the difference in the base charge. So this is where, how thirty, this is how sausage is made basically in the water. This, these, these two numbers have, this number has to equal that number that we're trying to get to. And so our sales number is about a third, you know, that, that hundred and forty million gallons that we're gonna sell is about a third of what we do. So that's why we have the base charge and that's how, all the, all these numbers add up to what you see on the, and the rate coming up here. Go to the next.
Now, you've got the meters, meter sizes.
Yes.
Now, that's, that's what's billed, that's not what's actual, correct? In other words, are your fire meters, are they even part of this?
The fire meters are, are actually not part of, the only thing that they're part of is they're, they're equated into five eighths and three quarters. Because the only thing, the only charge that we charge for fire meters is because they're inactive. The whole thing is to, to prevent water piracy. We, we have a meter on a fire meter. So the main thing that, that we have, regardless if it's a four, three, six inch, whatever, is we have a meter on it, but it's charged as a three-quarter or five eighths unless there's consumption. If there's consumption, then they're charged the, the appropriate meter rate. And that's by, that's by the ordinance we established.
Cause I was fixing that, I know there's other meters.
Yeah.
Those sizes, but.
Yes, but they're all, they're all, for all practical purposes, the twelve months or the, the eleven months of the year that they're not, that the system's not being tested or flowed, they're being charged as a three-quarter, five-eighth meter. That's, that's not to put, we don't wanna put the burden on, on the, the commercial owner. The main thing is we're glad that they are following the code and that they have a, a sprinkler system. The main thing is just to prevent water piracy from somebody tapping that fire line and, and using it for domestic or commercial purposes.
But yeah, but yeah, the main point on this is here's, here's how we generate the revenue to equal the expenses. So, and it, it's, it's a, it's a mixture of sales and it's a mixture of base rate. Because, you know, if we only sell a hundred and twenty million, we're gonna be short, you know, on amount. So we, you know, that, we, we try to set that number at a, a rate we feel comfortable with. The other thing about that is too, that hundred and forty million is at the rate of three-point-two-oh. When, when you look at your, and when you look at your rate, uh, calendar, that's the lowest rate we have. It goes up from there as you use ten thousand, twenty thousand, forty. So we've built, we've built some insurance with making sure that we get to that number, to answer your question, Billy. There's a little insurance in that that, you know, we're not gonna be short on the water when, when that comes in. So that's how the sausage is really made. Okay, and Billy, you asked about winter averaging rates. I, I did the example of that, uh, on the sewer. Very similar, uh, exercise, if you want to go to the next slide, show you, oh, yeah. And this is your last eighteen months of, uh, water flows and in sales. So I took December through February, which is a typical average, uh, month. And we averaged right about eight million gallons in twenty fifteen and about eight million gallons in twenty sixteen. So it's pretty consistent. You multiply that by twelve, gives you, remember, we're, we're looking at an annual sales number of a hundred and forty million now to do this. Well, if we go to winter averaging, we're gonna have to cut that back to about a hundred million. So.
Uh, was, uh, industries and snugly moors taken out of that or was that included in the average?
Well, this, this is, this is the total sales in the city. I mean, each, they've got the, on the billing software, they'll be able to, I think you got confirmation that they can do a winter average out of, for each of the individuals. But I, I just looked at it holistically from a ten-thousand-foot view. This is your total sales. So say we have to cut, we do winter averaging, you're only averaging eight million during the winter months. So that's your total, that's industrial, homeowners, everybody. We can get as custom as you need. But I, I just wanted you to see the impact of what a winter average might be on total, on total sales.
Yeah, but I think that the impact would be way less if you were just doing it on homes. Because, because you, you know, the home being less than the eight million.
Right.
You'd also still have all the, on the school, the commercial, all that kind of stuff still in there.
The school's gonna be the really dominant major user. I mean, we don't have any, we don't have any manufacturing. I mean, uh, Caterpillar Logistics is just a storehouse. Um, same thing with Foxworth. And so they're, where we get their, we get it on inventory. Uh, G C, you know, G C E C is, I mean, they're out in the field, tech line. I mean, really, it's just restrooms at those places. Most of the manufacturing, my understanding is they don't use any water, they're not a high consumer. And priority public safety, they're, I mean, they just have to.
Well, if you're figuring out what it would be without schools, it would be pretty easy.
We could possibly pull the schools out.
Yeah.
But it's, it's gonna be, I mean, yeah, I was looking.
I love to average when you do the winter averaging. Are you, you stay behind, correct? As far as you, annually, you have to adjust. So you're never caught up.
Right.
So you're, you're constantly.
Right, yeah, yeah, the next, the next couple of slides will show how, how, you typically have to make that up. So.
So just wanting a visual.
So, so, so understanding that a hundred million is kind of, a hundred million is your sales number now that you have to achieve to make that. Makes, so now you're, yeah, okay, yeah, let's go to the next slide, I didn't do that. Okay, so here's the hundred and forty million. This is the sewer. Here's our one oh eight-five in expenses. And at a hundred and forty million gallons, our rate came out to twenty-nine fifty-seven this year, which gets us that one oh eight-five. Okay?
Okay.
So now, get with the next slide please Jennifer. So now if I cut that back to a hundred million and do the winter averaging for all that, we still have to get to the one eight-five, one oh eight-five.
Okay.
But that, we just lost a hundred and, was it a hundred and twenty-eight thousand in sales revenue? So now we have to make it up in the, uh, equivalents in the base rate. So the base rate went from twenty-nine fifty to thirty-five fifty. So you just raised everybody's base rate by six dollars per month.
Okay.
To do winter averaging.
Okay.
And, and, you know, that's in.
So this is one of those things that works better the more lines you have, correct?
Yes, yes, once we get.
So when we have growth, then we can start to think more about averaging.
Right, when you have growth, it, it becomes a whole lot easier because it's not, you know, that, you know, forty, forty million gallons out of a hundred and forty. You know, that's a third, that's a third of your.
Significant.
That's a third of your revenue for sales that you're losing based on that. So yeah, uh, that's three-twenty and let's go back previous slide Jennifer, please. Yeah, it's four forty-eight, four forty-eight to three-twenty. So it's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in sales revenue you lose doing winter averaging at this, at this point with your meter count right now. So you have, you have to make that hundred and twenty-eight up somehow in the way you, you either raise fees or, or you have to put it on the base rate.
Right, and individuals that had talked about winter averaging where they've lived before, they felt it would save them on their rate. But obviously now, at this point in our growth, it would not save them, it would actually increase their rate. So it wouldn't be a wise thing to do at this point.
Well, yeah, I mean, it was a base, I mean, it all depends on how much, if they're, if they're, if they're, if they're, yeah, it all depends on how much water they use. Because there's a break, there's a breakover point to where you make up for that extra six dollars.
Okay.
I thought, I thought the issue was that people thought that their sewer rate was too high because it was tied to the water rate. And I thought that's what the winter averaging was gonna do, is gonna drop the sewer charge in the summer months.
That's a sewer, that's a sewer cap, that's typically, yeah.
Right.
It's, it, yeah, it was.
It, it will.
That's the issue, right?
Yeah, that's the issue, but this is the way you solve it, but you have to get the money from somebody. For, for your big water user to save money, you have to charge all the small water users.
The base customer.
To, to get, to make the money else. Now, my question would be is can something like this be, I know you were talking about, you know, like being behind Russell was and, and, and the concept that can you implement it with only people who have been on the water system for two years? Or the only ones can go to it? And that, and, and stuff like that, where you have to, you have to earn your right to be on that plan? Can, can water, can water, it, it be done that way?
We can check with legal. I don't think you can, because one of the questions that the previous mayor had asked was could we, could we exempt people sixty-five or older?
Okay, yeah.
And the response that legal gave was that you cannot create a special utility cost for, for one customer versus another. That there has to be some, there has to be some rhyme or reason to, you can't have a special exemption, is, is the way legal would define it. I, I can find that response and give it to you.
Well, I was, I was wondering whether it could be done based on, you don't have, you don't have a, fingers for them to determine what their winter rate should actually be, because they haven't been on the plan. How do you determine? So therefore, you could exempt them from being in the plan until they had sufficient.
Right.
Amount of numbers to give you an, or an averaging.
Well, remember too, the, the winter averaging is only, uh, helpful to the abuser in the summertime. That's overwatering, irrigation, things like that. Because the inside domestic use is basically the same by year in, year out. All you're doing is giving the advantage to the person who's overwatering and using excess outdoor waters that.
He may not be overwatering.
Well, they, but, but, well, but I mean, because typically, I mean, you know, typically you shut your sprinkler off or have it to once a week or once a month from November through maybe March, and then ramp it up to twice a week or whatever. But the only person you're benefiting is the one with the sprinklers and, and.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting to. Let them pay the same rate times the volume, they're gonna have a higher bill. We're not, we're not trying to relieve them of their water usage, their cost of water usage. What we're trying to do is establish a flatter sewer charge. Right now, sewer is tied to the water rate.
Right.
So, you know, why are we, why are we taking from the water to pay for?
Well, we're not, we're not taking from the water, we're just saying, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have to treat a hundred, we're, and we're gonna have to treat a hundred and forty million gallons a year with the sewer system. That's kind of the number, you know, this is the number that we play with. And we equal it just so, I mean, otherwise you'd have to get a sewer meter on every house to figure out.
Well, no, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is for the, for the sewer charge, you would do, you would come up with a, the average that's allocated by it and divide it by the number of sewer lines.
Okay.
Would that not, does, is this software not, I mean, does that worksheet not work that?
Yeah, definitely. That's that number right there. The, uh.
I mean, there would be a flat rate on, on sewer unless.
The guys that I've talked to that had a problem with this, they were under the impression that they couldn't have an irrigation meter. And they were upset that, you know, they're watering their lawns and there's all this water they're using that is not going in the sewer system. After I talked to them about, yes, you can get an irrigation meter, in fact, you should get an irrigation meter. I haven't heard back from them.
Okay.
So, I mean, in, in reality, in my opinion, we have the fix. And that's encouraging the irrigation meters, because people, if you've got an irrigation system and you put an irrigation meter on it, majority of the other, your domestic meter, the more, majority of that water's going down the sewer.
Right.
I mean, except for using a water hose here.
Well, yeah, I can add to this.
How much does it cost?
Being a licensed irrigator myself, uh, when I was putting in systems, it was, it cost, and it changed, I don't know what the actual number would be here, but it was seven or eight hundred dollars to have a separate meter put in. And based on an average twice a week, it took, it was a five to six-year payback. So that was kind, and then after five years, you were clear, you know, and that, because you're only saving the sewer rate, you gotta pay the water rate on that irrigation. But there was a five to seven-year payback was typical.
Do, do they still want this irrigation meter to get a base charge?
Yes, yes, they get a base charge.
Just the one in? Just.
A base water charge, they don't get a base sewer charge.
So that twenty-six that you see in your, in your sheet, on what, what was, uh, suggested?
And, yeah, and, and, before, I had another question about that. Uh, when you chose the numbers up there, it basically costs seven more, seven dollars more base fee.
Yep.
Seven dollars more base fee for everybody, for them to get a cheaper water.
For them to get.
Cheaper water.
To get, you know, to get a cheaper sewer.
Cause this is, this is a sewer, this is a, I mean, cheaper.
Cheaper, cheaper, come on in, yeah, right. So, so what, basically, everybody who's overwatering with their sprinkler system is getting a six-dollar, a connection supplement from everybody else that doesn't have a sprinkler system, is, is really what's happening.
Look at is, if, say, fifty people in Georgetown wanted a water meter for irrigation.
Yeah.
That'd be fifty concrete cuts and fifty taps.
Yeah, there's a chart. We, we, that's, that's part of the.
Concrete cuts, why?
We have to cook the concrete, they have to go mine. They have to go out to the mine to get the, bring a new water service in so they can put the irrigation meter in. That's part of that seven hundred dollars.
Just run off the rain, the line that's already going to the place?
You're rubbing feet and playpalm.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're taking, yeah, if your washing machine's going at the same time, you're in, if the pressure's down, you'll, you'll not.
Oh, I should've seen that three o'clock.
Well, yeah, typically, that's not a problem. Typically, that's not a problem.
But you're saying they have to run a whole new line?
That's probably what the people, that, it was suggested to them that they look into getting an irrigation meter. When they come in and find out the fees they have to pay to get one.
Yeah, okay.
Guys I talked to didn't, they wanted a meter and said, why can't we get a meter?
Yeah. So what the twenty-six, it would, it would be just a part of seven, like an irrigation meter would be the base charge? And then would it be without the sewer for irrigation?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because each one of those is.
But they, but they end up paying an extra base charge. That's why you don't catch up so bad.
For the irrigation.
Yeah, they, they, they just get the base charge on the water side only though. There is no charge on the sewer side.
Yeah, but they're paying, they're paying extra water. Yeah. To use water the other way.
Yeah, yeah.
And they also disconnect it in the winter months and save the base fee.
Yeah, I mean, that, that works out.
Oh, so we can disconnect the water and run our neighbor? No, no, okay. That's how, that, right, you work, a better word than that is, we have a share system where we share water between houses.
Yeah.
Put a hose to each, people, they ran the hydrant, now if you ran a hose between three houses, you just turn the valves on when they, they didn't have any water in this one, when that one, get it? didn't have any water in this one, when that one.
We have CSI, had to go shut both meters off. Well, that's them.
Yeah.
And your back.
Well, I'm not, he's, he's paying for him one, I'm paying for mine, other than he backed it off.
To answer Robert's question though, about forty-eight, fifty-one right there, if you charged every connection, every three-quarter inch connection, that number, there's no flow, there's no flow calculation added. That number times, that number times twelve equals your one oh eight five.
Oh, okay.
So that's your socialist sewer fee.
We all pay forty-eight and everybody can use as much water as they want to.
Yeah, well, well.
Which would, I, I think the people would use more water then than they would the other way.
Well, and then, and then you'd get to a point that your revenue is not paying for what you're buying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so, yeah, but. And if, if you did a sewer cap, you still have to get, you still have to get that one oh eight.
Yeah, I mean.
So, if you did a sewer cap, then your water rate is gonna increase to, to, for the cap.
Yeah, if you're not getting, if you're not equaling your water sales with your sewer and at your base rate, then you've got to do something with your base rate to adjust for that. So if you're putting a cap in, you're doing averaging, if you're doing something, you've got to, that, you know, it, it just, you got, you know, revenue, revenue in and expenditures out, I mean.
This would be an ideal opportunity for the mayor, to add to your articles, a little conversation about it, I mean, sewer averaging and the whole, whole thing, and how it will cost individual, it'll cost the people who blow in seven dollars more.
To their registered.
So, so, you know, and, and people will get.
Please stop.
Please stop.
Stop?
Don't, don't get me to do that.
But that, but that's how winter averaging works, and that's how caps work, is, is you're messing with these two numbers right here, your sales number and your base rate. And how you divide it up is how you want to divide it up, but that, like I said, the, the little spreadsheet that the TCEQ has every option that you've been talking about doing this, we can look at them and tweak them, it's just a matter of figuring out how you wanna tweak it to make it work. And like I said, once this number gets up to where we've got more legs supporting the water system, the rates really start coming down and settling out, so, but we gotta get to that growth.
And just to remind everybody too, one of the reasons that we settled on this system had to do with that base rate. And trying to keep that base rate as low as possible, because the average, especially when we're real concerned with a lot of the elderly in this, in this town, you know, being on fixed incomes, things like that, that was the rate we needed to, to target. So if we do the caps or we do the, the other, that raises.
Well, it'll, you're right, it will push the burden, burden down into the base rate and into the base consumption, so where you'll see the, the impact on the front end is gonna be in the base rate up to five thousand, and that's where you'll see the direct impact, because that's where, that's the foundation for building the rate. So it's, I mean, we can put a cap, you know, we, some of the cities do have a, have a cap on sewer at thirty thousand. The main thing is, is finding, finding the, well, just finding the revenue, really, and so how do you, how do you wanna go about that? And so, you know, we do have this program, we can, we can incorporate a cap into it, we can do the winter averaging. Uh, Jennifer, actually, you know, this is a PowerPoint, but we can actually pull up a spreadsheet and we can play around with it, and that's what I, you know, if y'all wanted to, that's something that we, we had time to do, and that's why I kinda wanted to move towards the rate and just talk about the highlights of the projects that we helped accomplish this next year, and if everybody agreed on the revenue and expenditures. So, um, what, go ahead and go to the next, next slide, Jennifer. Okay, that's what we talked about with a hundred, so, has your major point at a hundred thousand?
Yeah, yeah, well, and yeah, this, this is back to what we've been saying about the, without the thing is, what that, what this does is it caps the sales portion of your revenue stream. So just understand that a cap or an average, you're, you're restricting how big your sales portion is versus your. And it spreads the bur, uh, burden to all sewer, because now you're, now you're talking about your base rate, is they're having to shoulder more of the burden and not the heavy users, and I, I call them the users and abusers, because there's people that overwater and people that use a lot of it that wanna do that. And here's, here's, based on this year's model, uh, the base rate for sewer with, at the whole hundred and forty million gallons is anticipated sales is twenty-nine point five seven. If we go back to the hundred million gallon number, it's thirty-five point five one, so that's a twenty, that's a twenty percent increase just on the base rate. So, yeah, so, that, that, that's, you know, that, that, those, those are the numbers. Go to the next.
Thank you for working it out for us.
Okay, uh, again, the, the alternative is the winter averaging though, it's, it's like we said, and the city welcomes this, is irrigation, separate irrigation meters. They, they, if it's tagged and put into the system as their irrigation meter, there is zero sewer charge on it, there's no base rate sewer, there's no usage fee, it's just a water, you get the water rate and the water base fee, and you're just paying for water as you use it as a Instagram. And then, uh, that, here's the, the socialist version I was talking about, is if you just put all, all sewer chargers, base rates go from twenty-nine fifty-seven up to forty-eight, so you, a twenty dollar increase for every base, then you don't have to worry about flows, but that's kinda risky too.
Approximately how much would it cost to put in an irrigation meter then with all the, all the manpower, the man hours?
About seven to eight hundred, seven to eight hundred dollars was the number that I was quoting, I haven't done, I haven't tried to open any irrigation in Austin, but it was about seven or eight hundred dollars is what it would cost.
With the concrete streets and our mains are in the middle of the concrete, we'd have to cut the concrete, and then you, I mean, it'd take us, with the crew I have now, would be three or four days on each meter.
So, yeah, we hadn't, we hadn't actually run that up, but, you know, anywhere from five to, five hundred to a thousand dollars probably.
Plus disrupting streets.
Who would charge an impact fee, that fee?
An actual cost.
Well, that's true.
And then a deposit.
Yeah, so you got, yeah, you got twenty-two hundred dollar impact fee on top of that, so. That's, so, so that, that payoff period just got longer, the five to seven years, so, that is true.
So what we could do is we could pull up the rate sheet, if y'all wanted to mess around, we could actually, uh, you know, we could incorporate Anna's rates in there, if y'all want to look at a lower, lower base rate, but a higher consumption rate on, on the back end. I mean, there's all kinds of different ways we could do it, that's why we went out and did, did the, um, the rate comparison, was to look at what, where we, where we're competitive with other cities. And so if you look at, um, you know, the whole idea that we put into this and what we, when we discussed it and we're talking about, you know, remaining competitive with other cities and not, um, to actually stay lower than them, and even, especially on the high end, um, Anna's, Anna's where we look directly, the only place we couldn't get competitive was on the base rate and in the base consumption up to five thousand gallons. Uh, everywhere else in our, in our major competitors, which are Anna once and now, to remain competitive, um, can pull this up. And, uh, but we can, you know, where Anna's five ninety, well, on the water side, Anna's considerably higher, but their base rate is, is thirteen dollars lower than ours is. So there's, there's certain things that we can actually play with and mess with if y'all would like for us to, to try and make it where we're similar in scope, um, and see if that still gets us what, what money we need, uh, to be able to function and, and provide service.
In that two equations down at the bottom there, you can see that their base rate, they're thirteen dollars cheaper here, but look at their, I mean, they, they're charging you almost six dollars a thousand gallons for, in, in, six dollars a thousand gallons versus three, so, three, okay, so three, and that's twelve, so in four thousand gallons, you, you've equaled out, if your average use is four thousand gallons, you and Anna and, and Austin are exactly the same. And then all they're doing is playing with those two numbers at the bottom, is it sales or is it base rate, and I mean, and that's, and that's how you, that's how you play the game.
What's our average user?
Our average user's in the ten to twenty thousand gallon range. So that's where we're wanting to remain as competitive as possible, we're not too far out of that range, so if you look at the typical bill and this, of course, this is just on the water side, this isn't the total bill, the total bill's down towards the bottom, but if you're looking at the typical bill in the five thousand gallon range, you know, I mean, we're, we're at eleven dollars, Anna's, Anna's a value for the, for the base customer at five thousand gallons, but once you get above that, you know, you get into the ten to twenty thousand gallon range, which is the majority of our customers, you know, we're, we're savings, you know, just a pennies, you know, a dollar, a dollar ten, a dollar ten at the ten thousand gallon level, but once you get up to twenty thousand gallons, I mean, you're saving forty-five bucks, once you get to thirty gallons, I mean, good lord, you're saving over a hundred and ten dollars.
We got some legal re right there in the thirty thousand.
Sure.
We can raise that.
And we could.
To, to relieve some stress off of that.
And so we, and so that's, that's the main reason to have this conversation, is to talk about what would y'all like to see as far as the rate and making the adjustments? Because the flat three percent was just bringing y'all a recommendation of, you know, just increasing it steadily across the, across the board, but we can do, we can do an escalated rate and try and put the burden on the, on the higher end customer.
Started out with that, and that hit us pretty hard.
It did, so we, we made adjustments, we did go higher, I mean, we did look at going higher.
I mean, affected the school, it affected the school pretty big, and then there was.
Yeah. The school and the park, and, yeah, and the parks that they paid the meters on, yeah, that, I mean, it was very big. That, that base, the base rate, up to the thirty thousand though, ours is based on the five thousand gallon range, so that, I mean, and that, that whole rate, we don't have a variable, we're just trying to get ours to match at the five thousand level. So to, to penalize the thirty thousand and put it back into the consumption number is a lot more math. And I don't know, I mean.
It seems like it's the fair thing to do.
Yeah, I'm, let's see, I've got. I've got the old, our old, our old favorite spreadsheet up right now, a couple of years ago, I wanna see how many are over thirty thousand.
Are you able to do a penalty? I shouldn't say penalty necessarily, but an increased rate for excessive users in residential home? It's where you get your, your most, um, at least right now in our town, the, the abusers are gonna be residential.
Sure, we don't have, uh, we can do, we, well, we'd have to get an integrated second spreadsheet in to where we, you're talking about doing like a commercial, a commercial industrial institution rate and then a residential rate, and where one, we didn't, we just have to integrate these two spreadsheets.
So many people it's gonna affect, if, if you do something like this, it's gonna be the school district.
Sure.
And obviously, we don't wanna, uh, you know, the school district and just knowing them, they're very conservative by nature. They don't go out to spend money just for the fun of it, especially with water. But they have their needs.
Where the, where the school district's rate is high is on the base rate, so we're trying to build into the guaranteed rate, when you look at the, if, whenever we met with the superintendent about the rate, the discussion always centers around the meter equivalent scale. And so where he wants to show that, that other, other districts are being charged less for their base rate, our savings for them is on the consumption, and so there's a trade-off there, and so it just, we just need to be able to modify the, the, we, we need to modify the, the meter, uh, meter equivalency scale, but then that would push more of the demand for revenue back on the residential meters. So, I mean, it ends up being, whenever we met with him, once we look at the, the total bill, they're doing, we're, we're in the competitive range, but.
Well, that's what I'm saying, finding a way to leave, leave them alone, because they're not an abuser. But a residential that's using thirty thousand gallons or more could easily be, I mean, TC, I mean, even the guy that came from TCEQ, I mean, he talked about, you know, addressing the abuser, you hit him in the pocketbook, they're gonna cut back on water, I mean, your ultimate goal is for them to save water and not just use it, and if you run it down the gutter.
Okay, so.
But most cities, when they go after the abuser, the abuser quits abusing, and then the city turns around and raises the water rate on everybody to make up the difference, because they didn't get as much money in as they wanted to. Or they, or they pass ordinance to the city, you can't water.
Well, if we're doing our base rate.
And, and then they raise everybody's water rates by twenty dollars to make up for the difference that the city's losing.
But we don't put, we don't put our, we keep everything on our base rate.
So we can lower the base rate.
And, and the consumption increase and not count on those cells.
Okay, this is.
That just hurts the poor people, is it?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting.
Yeah, that just, that just hurts.
Big income.
That just, now you're making all this stuff away.
No, that's why I said you don't affect, you don't change the base rate, if you're gonna, if you're going to penalize the abuser, you don't even put that in, you don't even factor that in, because of what, exactly what, because you're building a budget based off of history, and that, that history is consumption and increased growth. Based off of your knowledge, you know that you hit somebody hard, in the pocket they cut back. So you're not gonna go with a budget that is going to expect that same water usage from that particular category. I mean, essentially, essentially what.
You sure ruin a neighborhood fast that way.
Yep.
You kill a neighborhood fast that way. I've seen, I've seen some neighborhoods where they have problems getting water and stuff like that, and everybody's had drought, you know, from July, I mean, from January, June, I mean, on, they got brown yards throughout the whole neighborhood.
We're not, I mean, the only restrictions that we're planning to, to be under is, is the city's gonna have to go to North Texas, we're just gonna start taking water here in a couple of years. But I mean, we're not trying to impose any special restrictions.
I mean, they had a problem, they had, their water was too high, they kept raising water rates on, on communities.
I understand, and so.
And so.
The, so, and, and what we built in and what we're looking at here, you know, this is to remain competitive with last year's rates for those cities.
I'm not playing by law, I'm just saying that we go to some other system like that.
I, I understand, and so the main, the main thing is, you know, we have conversations, I mean, y'all have conversations with individuals that don't feel comfortable coming and asking us, and we have conversations with people who come in that are fairly outraged and want their utility built too. And so the main thing that we're trying to do is, we're trying to take into consideration, everybody across the scale, we're trying to remain competitive. And so what we're, what I'm, what I'm bringing to you as a recommendation with that three percent is remaining competitive within that, because my anticipation is that all of these other cities, this is their last year's rate, this is not what they're considering or contemplating implementing. I believe that these other cities are gonna have a rate increase, and we're gonna remain, we'll, we'll be on a deep end. I believe that these other cities are gonna have a rate increase, and we're gonna remain, we'll, we'll be on a deep end when it's all said and done. I, I believe that, even on a few of the five thousand gallon ranges. And they have a broader base, and they should be able to be lower than us, but they're not.
Did you ever find out about thirty thousand?
Thirty, yeah, and it was in October, it was thirteen was when we did the rollback thing. And that's, I, I had all the meters there, we had sixty-two that were over thirty thousand for that month. And I'm doing it in September right now. And, so, there's, yeah, there's not, out of fourteen hundred residential, you know, small meters, there's only sixty-two that actually exceeded. And that, that was in October, so...
That was in October. Do you have like any other month?
Well, I, I don't have, I'd have to get that information from Jennifer.
And what I was saying, Billy, is, I'm, I'm happy with what we got. And I was talking about his, John, his desire to increase the higher users. And then, and you, you answered your own question, or comment, on, on what that's gonna affect. That's why I don't wanna change what we got. And if we wanna increase something, we affect only those people, and it's not part of our budget. Because they already know what's gonna happen, they're gonna cut back. Does that make sense? So, you have a penalty in place, but it's not affecting our budget, it's affecting the user.
It's gonna affect our budget too, because if they're gonna cut back, we're not gonna hit our sales goal.
No, no. Yeah, our budget's based off of a base rate.
That may do, but you're gonna charge more. You gotta have sales of water. Even without the base rates, you gotta have a certain amount of your profit, your money comes from.
You gotta have...
Using above what the base rate is.
Yes, sir.
And, and so, if you don't have those, if all those people cut back, which is what, like I'm saying, Richardson did. Richardson cut all the people back, not by rate increases, but by requirements, you can only water once every two weeks. And as soon as they did that, then they came in and raised their base rate by twenty dollars to make up for it, because they were gonna lose all the water sales, because they were telling people you can't water. And, and there's something wrong with a system like that to me. And, and that you force people not to use it, and you charge more to use less, because you forced them not to use it.
So, you've answered, what I'm saying is, you've answered your own question with the problem. This creates that problem. You keep, but you can keep your base rate, you see all the problems that it involves? That's why I'm saying the system that we have right now, where we have a base rate that is low, and we don't have the caps, we don't have the, we don't have the averaging. It allows our base rate and, for our customers right now, to be the best that we can have. We start adjusting all of these, our, our, our base rate's gonna increase for our, our low-income users.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of adjusting any of these. I didn't want answers that I can give to people who ask about averaging. And I'm gonna tell them that, yeah, we can go to something like that, yeah, it's gonna cost every customer in town seven dollars per month to do it. And, and so, you can save some money, you're, all, you know, all your neighbors in town are gonna have to pay seven dollars more. Is that what you really want? You have another system here you can go to, is you can buy, you can buy and get your own meter. That's gonna cost you this amount of dollars, it's gonna take you this amount of time to get it, to make that money. You know, sorry, we're not the big city like, you know, you move from, we don't have the same kind of system. I don't believe you that Anna has that system, I don't believe you that, that, that Hal has that system. They're not doing a three-month average for your, winter month average for the sewer. So, then you gotta answer to them.
Well, I do have, I mean, I do have a spread, I do have a spreadsheet, I got a Word document, where we need our new utility billing clerk, I had her call around after we had our conversation yesterday. And so, I have the document where it tells, it tells you exactly who has a sewer cap around this. Who has, who has winter averaging, and who all, who all does this. And I asked her to go across the board, contact the utility billing clerk of each one of these cities, find out if they have a sewer cap, and where does it stop? Do they have, do they have winter averaging? You know, what's, what months, what months do they average? So, I do have that data. And I have that information for you, in case, in case you wanna...
Great, I'd love to, great.
Because I do appreciate y'all feeling...
But, that was what I was saying, that it could be, that, that it wouldn't be a bad thing for the mayor to write that goes in the favor. Now, why, why is that a bad thing?
Well, because it would...
I mean, I wanted to say that, as the council is thinking about these decisions as to what to do, that's best for everybody. They've chosen to stick with keeping the lower rate, so that, so that the general citizen that uses this amount of water will not be hurt by, you know, that, that...
I would probably recommend that we all take a look at it before he sends it out. That's, that's the main thing. So, that's why I'm saying, though, you don't let it just...
We don't trust you.
No, no, sir, that's not what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm, somebody should pick up on one word.
Yeah. It's, it's for, it's for the same reason that I turned it over when it got technical, to learn, okay? To be honest with you, is to make sure that we understand exactly what we're saying.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. It's not because I don't trust the mayor, it's not even like... It's because I wanna make sure that, that everything's consistent. And when he says it, and he puts it in writing, I understand it, and that way, it's, it's not, well, the mayor wrote this, and you're saying that.
Yeah.
This doesn't make any sense. You're lying to me, and so is the mayor, or, you know, or somebody's lying. You know, the conversations we get into from time to time, where somebody's trying to...
I, I think it's a good topic, and I...
You have to keep things going.
I, I don't mind, it's, it's a good topic, and it's, it's something worth the newsletter that goes out with the water bill. And I don't mind writing something and passing it around, get, get some input, to make sure, to make sure that it's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
September's number, we had sixty-two in October, and September that year was forty-four. So, we're only talking, probably around fifty.
Okay.
Of course, this was a couple of years ago too, when we had that problem. So, I, I don't have, I don't keep, but they'll just kind of a quick ballpark.
I can tell you biggest abusers.
Yeah.
And that's VR Horton, when he hit the yard. They let the water run down the street.
Yeah, yeah. And a lot of our homeowners don't notice, changed that either. They just let that run on the same schedule.
And then, all our meter boxes are full of water.
But, if you remember what, what was, what we put into place as far as the water restrictions, new lawns are exempt. So, it's, you know, it's one of those things where you want your lawn, lawn to get established, but...
Yeah, but it's only thirty, thirty days or sixty days.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't very long.
But, it's Horton take advantage of that? Yes, they did. So, you know, we're trying to keep them in check. The main thing is...
It wasn't any different than what, actually, what they did, same thing.
No, I mean, they don't, we, we read the meters, and they got high water, and Jennifer sends us back out, so that's all we hide.
Yeah.
And we'll go back there and it's the same thing. So, they, they're paying for it.
Yeah.
But, frankly, Ken, if you go to the year's rate sheet, this, this is the current rate sheet. If you look, this water year, the base rate actually went down by about a dollar.
Really?
Dollar and a quarter. Okay?
Okay.
And then, and once we start hitting, like I said, once we start hitting that, if you, because last, the current year that we're in right now is thirty-eight point ninety-eight. My glasses, I can read this. Yeah, thirty-eight ninety-eight, and the new base rate is thirty-seven seventy-six. We've lowered it almost a dollar and a quarter on the base rate. And, and, because we're, we're doing that, so, that, that's, you know, we're gonna start seeing adjustments like that. Now, the sewer rate did go up by about three dollars, but, you know, so, the combined rate...
And that's the main point of contention, but we're, we're trying to find, you know...
Yeah.
Can you just, if I have a subsidy?
No. Only if you have, you have to have at least a one-acre lot to have a subsidy.
Oh, I know, something, and approval of the city.
If we started out like Lucas, where everybody was on, on acre lots?
Yeah.
Then, that would be a lousy, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not, so, we're gonna keep going.
You know, and, yeah, and just, if you look at that rate sheet, we are, the, the water base rate did come down, and that's just, and that, and that, you know, it's a good thing. I mean, it's just that the sewer rate had to go up to meet, meet those expenses, okay?
And to be honest with you, we could've, besides, besides the capital projects that I showed y'all that we're gonna get done in sewer, could we have moved more expenses over, over to water, to try and make it, do the shell game, to make it look like water is, is paying, you know, that you're paying more for water, and the sewers, you're not making that much of an impact and paying for sewer? We could have. And, and it's, we're still can, I mean, if you want to do it. But, the main thing is, I mean, the costs are what they are. And so, we're trying to, you know, I mean, I moved, we moved a few things over, I mean, the dump truck expenses. You know, we could've moved all our personnel over there, over to water, that's still be working on the same stuff every day. But, I mean, the main thing is, you know, we're trying to find that applicable rate and that balance. But, it all, it would end up, it still end up being, the recommendation would still be sixty-seven thirty-three on the base rate is what, what would be recommended. It would just, when people were looking at their bill, they'd be paying more for, considerably more for water in the sewer. So, it's, it's, I... It depends. Impact fees, can you go over to this, this sheet, Jennifer? I talked to most of y'all, or I think I talked to everybody about, how many homes we anticipate for this next year? Of course, we, we hope that Stone Hollow does well, and they, you know, they build out and they sell all a hundred of their homes, and they move forward on their second phase. But, again, Stone Hollow's an unknown in Van Alstine. We believe that they're gonna put in quality product. The main thing is, we, Horton's put in fifty homes. We believe in, we believe in what Horton's gotten accomplished in the past, since they've come in and partnered with Van Alstine. And so, we believe that they're gonna sell all fifty of those lots pretty quickly. Stone Hollow, you know, we're counting on, out of, out of the fifty...
Those fifty lots with VR Horton?
Yes, sir.
When are they supposed, when are they supposed to start breaking ground?
Uh, they're, they're supposed to be submitting plans any day now to get started, and ask, request a pre-construction meeting. So, I'm just, I'm, I'm waiting for them, for their final plans in the middle, the plat, plat's been approved. Construction plans, you know, inspection fees and estro fees.
Will they go ahead and finish out Village Parkway?
Yes, we're, yeah, we have, we included, they're, they designed, and they're gonna construct Village Parkway to Kelly, but they're estrowing Kelly.
Okay.
So, to kind of build that, so...
Well, Stone Hollow, where they, where they're going up to Kelly right now, what are the final, things between Kelly and then?
It was, it's, it's designed to be asphalt, but I got the call this morning, and said they wanna put it into concrete, and I said, go right ahead. I don't have a problem with that. It just, it may, it'll make a minor construction issue when we rip it out, when we rebuild Kelly.
Yeah.
Who cares?
Okay, just to look at your totals as far as home building in Van Alstine. Twenty-fourteen was thirty-nine, or fiscal year, no, it's calendar year. Calendar year twenty-fourteen, thirty-nine homes were built in Van Alstine. Last year, we had eighty-six built. Sixteen has not gone so well, but we haven't finished out the calendar year, not the fiscal year. So, the whole reason I kept it at eighty for anticipated homes for impact and tap fees is, is to remain conservative on that. We could've gone a hundred, we talked about a hundred, we talked about one-twenty. But, you know, we wanna see how Stone Hollow does and come to the community, we wanna see how the economy keeps moving forward, and we wanna, we want Horton to get moving like they usually do, because, well, once they hit the ground, they, they run. So, we believe eighty is gonna be a good number for the lots, on what we anticipate. And that's something that we did mess with when, when we're playing with, with the rate to bring out something competitive. And we can, is that the spreadsheet, right? Okay. And so, we could actually, we could actually take it up to ninety, a hundred, and show you what that does to the rate, if y'all were interested.
Is Horton still doing anything, is Horton doing anything about the more north side town?
They've, they've passed on the property that they were considering. But, in talking to the, the land broker, there's another developer that's taking a look at, at the same property. So, there's, there's multiple opportunities, but, you know, if they don't get moving on it, then it won't be in consideration until eighteen. Got a call today about something else that is pretty interesting, but it's, I'll, once I get more information about it, I'll let y'all know. Yes, sir.
There, there's been some building going on in the whole part of town, as far as people buying stuff. Do we, do we have any idea how many lots are available there that could be, as far as infill's concerned? Yeah, just, just a ballpark. Probably a couple dozen.
You know, yes.
I mean, they're gonna have to come in, you know, like the Riley's are doing that one on Dallas Street, there's one big lot and a three.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and they're, they're, they're rebuilding, uh...
When you got Dan Vic?
Dan Vic's doing five lots.
Five lots. You know, you've got sporadically, you know, on the north side, you've got a lot here, a lot there. I wasn't even gonna say a couple dozen, I was gonna say about twelve to eighteen lots in infill, but it depends on, on how they're, how they're planned, because there's some larger lots, behind, you know, just on the north side of the, of Parkway, there's a larger lot that'd be broken up into a little small section.
So, that, that, that's what you're doing, three, you know, where the old lumberyard was, so, you know, so...
That was down there. Talk to y'all about the building one that was, was the brush.
Talking about irrigation meters, and it, in, in the future, if we're gonna work on our subdivision ordinance again, do we wanna make builders stub out, well, it would, it would be an additional tab. But, stub out for, for irrigation meters, for, for home buyers who, who are gonna wanna put one in?
That brings up an excellent suggestion, because Russell had talked about it earlier, about possibly, you talked about either, is it Frisco or Allen? And we're, we'll look into it, I've, I've got a contact of both. If Frisco and Allen, or Allen require it on an irrigation system, so, we're gonna confirm that and see what their policy is, and see if it's something that'll fit us. Because you're right, it would, it would make sense for, if we're gonna keep running into this...
Yeah.
To take care of it on the front end of development, and not have to go back and get streets and, you know, ashes, so...
What is Palladium? Are they one big master meter, or are they metered at individual buildings?
Metered at individual buildings.
How many meters is that?
They've got a six-inch meter, and five, six or seven one-inch meters on the little. They've got one big meter, they got a two-inch meter for the second little three-story. They've got a four or six-inch meter on the big building, and then, each of the little buildings has an inch-and-a-half meter.
Does each building have a separate fire riser?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That'll be good, and it'll irrigate, so, I'll be, that'll definitely help in eighteen, you know, I'm thinking about that budget.
Playing with the effect, you know, drinking just laughing at one-twenty.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's, I wouldn't think that'd be funny. Okay, yeah, okay, yeah. All right, go ahead, yeah, put in, if you'll look back up, and put in one twenty, um, on the...
Yeah, just gonna change the view on your screen, so you can see the whole rate sheet. There you go.
Good lord, wow.
That's not easy.
Right there. Okay, now wait a minute, pay attention, we got, we got a three percent, and sixty-seven thirty-three is the new base rate. They hear, I got, I've got it right here. Sixty-seven thirty-three right here, and it's a three percent across the board. Now, if you go to that hundred-twenty, this is aggressive, and look what happens. You got a ten percent drop in rates.
Wow.
But, and that number, you just went from two sixty-four on your total water and sewer, if you add to three ninety-six. So, now you're, now you're asking for your extra fees and your new home builders to come up with an extra hundred and forty thousand, kind of just like your, the sewer average rate. But, to budget that and to be there, and to count on that, to supplement your rates, just to lower, you know, get, you got a ten percent drop. You know, I noticed that your sewer rate stayed exactly the same, and your water base rate dropped six dollars. That's what growth is gonna do for you, and that's just, eighty, eighty's an aggr, I think eighty's a nice prime semi-conservative, but not over-aggressive number. Hundred-twenty is every one of those new lots that's hitting the ground is gonna be making those payments and ready to go, so...
And I will say this, I mean, and I actually talked to the builder of Stone Hollow today. And we were, he asked me a couple of questions about my industry, you know, being in the industry. But, the common problem in the industry right now is, they would've put down more homes if they could've. The labor and even... The labor and even material, there's shortages, concrete shortage. Right now, just to schedule a concrete pad, you have to do it thirty days out.
Wow.
And if you don't hit that date, it's not good.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's becoming, and you probably saw this with Horton in the last phase, even though they went, some of those houses didn't get finished nearly as quickly as they, or used to building. It's taking longer to put things up because of labor shortages and materials and a big thing right now is concrete and labor. It's really just slowing things down.
Asphalt, I mean, we've been waiting on contractors to give us bids and to, and give us a timeframe to take care of that work. I mean, we have that dump truck and we have the five blocked off where we had to go in and fix that one-inch line and it's been there for what, a week and a half? Something like that, so I'm not asking you. But the main thing is, is the guys are going to do, we're going to get the hot mix, we're going to do, because I mean, we just, we can't, I mean, we can't afford to keep waiting because we're blocking off the street and we're blocking off five too.
I say all that to say that I like your eighty because I think that realistically that may be what happens, just, I like the one-twenty. I think it's very doable if it wasn't for all of the problems. Because I honestly, the demand is there for them to put up a hundred-twenty homes right now, but they, I don't think they can do it.
Probably better off to base it off eighty and get it through.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Then you have a surplus, then you have a budget surplus.
Yeah, right. Well, we're getting closer to that reserve, that three months, that, which I don't, I mean, I don't, not want, I just, you know, we're working more on projects than we are building reserve. I mean, do you think, do you think eighties, does everybody think eighties is a good number? I mean, that's where we ended up. I mean, if you think ninety or hundreds, the main thing is, I just, you know, we, we, there's a lot of discussion about it, believe it or not, so, I mean, eighty, eighty was, was a good number to us. I mean, we're really feeling confident that we'll get that eighty, even though it's been very slow on the front end this, this year, you know, feel like next year is going to be, going to be tremendous.
Eighty sensible, I think.
Well, it's slow this year because you didn't have the inventory. I mean, D.R. Horton built out the north end and they had no inventory to add more to it. What you're seeing right now, because there is no inventory on this, well, Stone Hollow's got inventory out there now, their streets are finishing their inlets now, thirty days, they're, you've got a hundred, you've got a hundred lot inventory that they can just blow and go on, so it'd be kind of interesting to see what happens.
She had two months of rain.
Yeah, well, yeah, but you really didn't have it, all you had in inventory available to build houses on was the infill lots in town. And so, I mean, we've got to get the development arm of this moving to keep the inventory moving so we can get that going. That's, I think that's where we're at. But yeah, I mean, see, so that, that's playing with the fee number, which makes everybody a whole lot more comfortable with the water rates, but can you do that? That is, that's putting, that's almost a hundred percent, you know, you've got a hundred and fifty-four total lots, new lots on the ground and fifty-five of those haven't even started construction yet, so that's, that's betting on the come right there and that's, that might be a little risky.
I think it'd be a relief. Is there anything else y'all would like to see for us to modify or mess with on the rate? Does anybody have any questions about revenue expenditures? I know we talked about it one-on-one, but if anybody had any question about projects, labor, equipment, we're trying to stay as lean as possible. Hopefully we can get Steve, you know, some qualified applicants or whoever has some suggestions for some people who might be able to apply, so, you know, there's, hopefully it'll work. I mean, it's, it's a labor market right now, so, you know, they do have the choice of going anywhere, anywhere, but hopefully we'll have kids from Van Alstine that want to stay here and learn the technical trade and Hallowport's is a good one, so. We, we at the point where everybody's comfortable with what we're suggesting or anybody want to, want to talk about anything else? I will get you all those, I will get you those comments from the, with you together, or the responses that went together from the, from the other cities on what they do, their, their works.
Was last year, it wasn't a flat four percent increase, was it? It was four?
Was it a flat four?
Four point zero.
Okay, so we did a flat four?
Yeah, it was flat four.
I couldn't remember, I knew it was four something.
Yeah, it was four, flat four all across.
Yes, sir.
We got the last couple slides of the presentation to talk about the, talk about the North Texas event.
What's, what the, what their rates going to be?
Yeah. Mayor brought up in an email, you know, the, you know, North Texas in their current rate is, they're, they're forecasting a ten percent increase every year in their base rate to their wholesale and member cities.
Wow.
So that's just ten percent off the, you know, per thousand gallons, you're getting a ten percent increase right now. And right now, let's see, they forecasted two fifty-eight for this coming year. We have some maintenance costs with GTUA at the pump station down in McKinney to pump it up here and bring it back, so what we're paying on the take or pay is two eighty-four per thousand gallons, which this is our, we, fifty-nine million gallons is our take or pay number. So there's a budget item in there for about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that, you know, like this year, you're paying a hundred and fifty-five thousand, last year you paid a hundred and forty-seven thousand and you've taken zero drops of water. Well, we're getting to that point where we're going to start taking that water and then start, and the goal is, and we're trying to get, and we're designing the system at six so that we pull out fifty-nine million, three hundred thousand gallons every year. We don't want to go over the take or pay, but we want to be right up against it wherever we can, because once you ratchet up, you never ratchet back with North Texas. I spent twenty years in Richardson and after two thousand, we never got back to our take, our take or pay. We, we, we were paying, well, Mesquite right now is paying for thirty percent of the water they'll never, they've never seen, they never, they don't take thirty percent of their money they're paying for. So it becomes, it becomes a very, 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 very restrictive. If you're in a growth curve, if you're Frisco or McKinney, it's no big deal, but if you're Garland, Mesquite, Richardson, it's, it's, it hammers. Well, Plano is even in that place right now.
It's killing them.
So anyway, so that, that's what it is, projecting that ten to eleven percent increase is what, this is what budget number you'll see coming up in the future, okay? And that's take or pay, but the good part about that is, is we'll be using that water, so we get the revenue on that water now, so. So there's a revenue stream that comes out of that.
Is it, did it end up being put in with the other water, the well water, so it's all now together or?
Well, yeah.
Part of the town getting well water and part of the town?
The whole town will be getting mixed water.
Okay.
And depending on how close you are to well site, you might be getting more groundwater than your surface, vice versa.
But we still plan to, to build a mixing station.
Well, we're actually...
I mean, not right away, but...
No, we're actually, we're, there are no mixing stations, we're actually be mixing at each of the well sites.
Okay.
So, and, and the first phase of this at well six, we're at the take point, what we're going to do is, there's a, it's, chloramines comes in, it's a chlorine and ammonia mixture. We're going to burn off the ammonia so we have a free chlorine system like you're using right now. So all that new water and that's where I'm working with the vendor right now to, we, there's a free chlorine taste point that we, if we burn off all the ammonia, then it becomes a free chlorine system, so we don't have to do anything at the well immediately after we hurt wells and what we're pumping in is a consistent type water. And then you'll see a bid probably this winter to go ahead and redo the disinfection sites at all the other existing wells with this, with the water board money, and we're going to have an ammonia compartment for it, although we won't fill it initially. So then when we do get to the point where we need to, we can not break out the ammonia at six and then we'll have ammonia on the others and then it becomes a blended system. So we're, we're kind of phasing this in, so we don't, when we get in ammonia, there's more requirements from TCQ and more testing is involved. And the only thing we'll do is total burn, go back to what we're doing. The only thing that's going to add to us is testing for nitrates and that's just even more testing. We, we tested the chlorine every day on every well and five, five locations in town. So it would be tested for nitrates there at the same time. We'll go to the next slide, okay? And then, so what I did was I tried to compare what that, what your, this is what you've paid, this is what you've paid to CGMA or to DGA for CGMA over the last few years, and I kind of did it based on a average water budget over the last couple of years to kind of get an idea. You can see that your water, what you pay for that water is about ten percent of your budget. And then if you run the X's out, it increases by about half a percent per year. So as the North Texas ten percent hits your budget system, it's going to cost you about a half a percent in total budget going forward. And this is, I was forecasting about a five percent increase in budget per year there, so it's, you know, it'll, it'll vary from this, but this kind of gives you an idea that you, you know, you're, you have to incorporate the increase that you're going to see from them, but it really, it's got a minute effect on how you're doing that. Go to the next slide, please. And so, yeah, you get a one half to one percent increase on the annual budget and that's making sure that we stay at that take, take or pay threshold. We don't, you know, once Melissa and Anna bust that take or pay, then everybody's going to have to bust it. Right now, we've got Howe and Van Alstine cushioning. Once we start taking ours, they're going to bust it, so then, yeah, negotiations with the CGMA will be interesting with that. So, and, and then the other good things about this is, is we get to finally use the water that you've been paying for for about the last ten years. We ought to really see, you know, that's fifty-nine million gallons a year and remember, we said we're going to sell a hundred and forty, so that's about a third of your supply. So we ought, it ought to give us some relief and let Steve catch up because, I mean, we're having all these crises with his wells. We can take a couple wells out of service, do some maintenance on them and just make them more efficient and we use them.
Right now, well, three every morning is down to seven feet, so we have to shut it down all day long just to catch up.
Interesting.
And then, then, you know, there's talk about Brazilian other water sources other than CGMA, you know, there's, we can get water from the north, we can get water from the west, we can get water from the east, we can get more groundwater.
Well, it'll still be CGMA, but it'll be North Texas, percent other sources than the North Texas.
Other than the North Texas, right. So once we do that, you know, it, once, you know, once we figure out, North Texas, you're in the take or pay, you've locked arms with them, nobody's ever gotten out of their take or pay schedule. There's people, I mean, Bob's hometown of Sunnyvale is trying to get out and go over to Dallas Water and they're just saying, "You can try, but you're going to pay us a hundred percent of your capital improvement cost," like sixty-four million dollars to get out, nobody's going to do that, so, they're pretty vicious about it right now. So what that, what that means though, if we get cheaper, obviously if we get other water sources, there's capital and, and treatment and all that other stuff, we're hoping that we get a blending of rates so that even if North Texas is going through the roof, others, you know, water rates are stabilized. When I was in Richardson, I had some Dallas and I had some North Texas water and I was just trying to, trying to get in a balance. Dallas was extremely more expensive than North Texas to, almost to a two to one factor and now it's kind of, now it's kind of switched. And that just happens based on capital needs over measured point in the water system, so.
And next slide, I have these questions.
Everybody good or ready for a motion?
A motion about what?
Everybody good, is everybody good with the right? Okay. Kimberly did have a question as far as where does the chlorine come out, what line out of does the chlorine come out? I haven't had to answer her question yet. And talking to Steve, it's, it comes out of wells.
Okay, we're doing how to be in there somewhere, so.
Does anybody else have any questions, anything that comes to mind? Everybody good?
Good presentation, I think.
Definitely need to land here for the technical aspect, I'm glad Steve's here, especially to explain what month it is. Always ready after Jennifer's interview. Make sure things move along and take notes and keep it all together. I'm definitely glad that all, all of y'all came out, it's important. So, is everybody still good for, Russell and I'll get together later this week, everybody's got to, we're going to get together for one-on-one general fund. We've got the general fund presentation after the council meeting, I think before you came in, I said that right now the agenda for next Tuesday's fairly long, so if it stays that way enough, we'll transition to general fund if we're prepared. And then Brad, again, Brad will be scaping in, making changes for him, Russell, y'all need to scapin', we have a lot of notes, so we're going to get multiple devices over here to make sure that y'all are able to put in, where are you going?
So council meeting's going to be normal place, we'll just have it right after that?
We'll have it right there.
Council meeting?
Yes, sir. Council meeting and general fund and budget presentation will be over here. Because the main thing is, we're trying to do it on the smart board and everything we're trying to get accomplished, it's, it just makes it too tough. So the gallery, if people actually come to the council meeting and they stick around, then even people in the gallery will be able to see what it is that y'all are looking at, what's being presented. Is everybody, everybody able to catch up?
Where would you put, you know, you have fifty people, where would you put them?
They do sit behind your office, so we just, we do two, three rows of chairs, we'd actually move these, these tables forward about four feet.
Well, it gives you better writing. Of course, it'll be on the agenda, it's posted online and on the board, but I, I'll write.
Well, we're going to need, we need to get more word out because there's going to be people still up there. Well, you know, you know, there will be. Jennifer just reminded me that since y'all are okay with what we've proposed, the statement to change the water rate, intend to change the water rate would go out on fifteen through the four, that way people are getting notified per the ordinance and, you know, everything's consistently before, okay? So if you have any concerns or anything comes up, please let us know, okay? Otherwise, that's, we don't want that.
All right, we ready? Ready to adjourn? Anybody have, want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Taking all in favor? All right, unanimous.
Thank you for that. This is thirty-seven.